Hello, everyone. Welcome to this candidate's forum for the Pacific Grove Mayor and City Council. That's my problem. My name is Mary Ellen Dick. I'm here representing the League of Women Voters in Monterey County. And this forum is being sponsored by the Pacific Grove Chamber of Commerce. We've got two different forums here. First, we're going to start with the two mayoral candidates, which is Bill Peet and Black Wax. And then we will have the six candidates running for City Council. Joe Emilio, Debbie Beck, Mark Chauquin, Lori McDonald, Tina Rao, and Darla Bynan. So just starting with the advertising, we are, again, we are the League of Women Voters. We are nonpartisan, but we do take positions on different kinds of problems, like water or green space and things like that, after we have done studies on it at the city, county, and local level. We would love people to join us. There is paper in the back on the tables there by the door with membership. And we're certainly looking for people who are interested in voter service and interested in helping us put on forums like this. We are doing a whole series of forums, and those are on our website, LegaWomenGroup. Now, regarding questions, we welcome questions. We like lots of questions. Every question must be polite. Every question must be available and appropriate for both candidates. No personal attacks will be read, you know, for doing this nicely, politely, and equally, giving everyone an equal chance on it. The forum, you know, the forum format for tonight is the two candidates pick numbers out of a hat. So Mr. Wax will go first, and Mr. Peet will go second to start. There will be two minutes for an opening, one minute for question, which is going to go back and forth and back and forth, and then one minute for a closing statement. And Mr. Peet will do the opening statement, and Mr. Wax will do the second. We will do the same format when we do the six candidates for the City Council. They've already chosen their numbers, and that will, the first will go from number one through number six, and keep going through. But the last, the first should be last, not both times. All right? So that's what we're going to do. Perfect. Okay. So our timer is sitting right here in the red coat. Everyone should pay attention because we will cut off your talking at the end of the sentence after your time is up, because we want to have time to answer more questions. Mr. Wax, you are going to get two minutes to give yours opening statement. Mr. Wax.
Oh, that it was on. Okay. Hi, y'all. My name is Mike Wax. I'm just going to sit up out of my chair a little bit, but that's me. I grew up in Arizona. I lived in Texas for 20 years. And two years ago, I moved to the peninsula with my wife Stephanie, who's back there, and our two young kids, Iris and Harry. So now, I'm doing the thing that makes the most sense of all, which is running for mayor. But the answer, or the reason why really, is simple. From day one, we felt like locals here because of our amazing neighbors and the incredible friends that we made. And it became very clear very quickly that we were never leaving this place. This is where we will grow old and where our kids will grow up, and really where I hope they will raise their families. Because of that, I have a real sense of urgency to make Pacific Grove not only the best place to live now, but for decades to come. Let's see. We live in the most beautiful place in the world, and I want to make sure that everyone could be here. But not all types and ages are able to live here and live vibrant lives. So we can't afford to punt on tough decisions or offer Band-Aid solutions for difficult choices that affect our city. Time is going by quick. But I will say, or I'll quickly jump to, why me? So for over 20 years, my career has been in thinking big and innovation, from NBA teams to nonprofit organizations to government agencies. But the through line in all that has been community, how to build it, how to make it bigger, and how to keep it. So listen, people need to have a stake in Pacific Grove. That's really what they need to have a stake in.
Thank you, Mr. Peet. All right. Let me reiterate, we're going to do this politely and courteously to all, and we're not going to do any applause or booing or gloating or any of those kinds of things. At the very end, when the two mayoral candidates have finished, then we will do a round of applause. Okay. Mr. Peet.
Thank you, Mary Ellen. The League of Women Voters and the PG Chamber of Commerce for hosting this event, and more importantly, you all for being here and participating. As you know, city government works best when people are engaged, and you are demonstrating that. Since the last election, we've turned the corner on COVID. During that time, city services remained intact with the exception of library and recreation programs, which have now returned to normal. During COVID, we managed to maintain reserves in spite of decreasing revenues. And recently, the library renewal project and the Point Pinos program were completed. Both are causes for celebration. Of course, even in a beautiful, small town like ours, there will be challenges. Arguably, affordable housing is at the top. I'll work to encourage development of affordable homes in Pacific Grove, regulations that assist housing development, but also take into account the character of our city and preserve all that is good. Another challenge is maintaining our coastal environment. Coastal wildlife protection will continue to be a top priority for me. I'll work to add trees on public property, and I'll work to create a climate action plan. Lastly, our town would not be the same without our small businesses and our wonderful downtown. City government needs to encourage business community feedback, and we should streamline regulations where appropriate to help existing businesses and attract new ones. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Peet. All right. You are going to answer the first question, and I'll tell both of you is that if you need a question repeated, I can repeat. So question number one, what is your position on Washington, on the Washington Park Skateboard Park? What is your opinion about the process, about how that was identified as the number one location? Mr. Peet?
So a number of issues are best first discussed in committees, city committees. And there's a number of issues to look at for any skate park. As I said in council, I am for a skate park in Pacific Grove. The question is the location and funding. And so we need to look at all the impacts on the neighborhood as well as having a good skate park. So that's going to be coming to council, and so I'm going to keep an open mind until that happens and listen to all the feedback, of which I've already gotten a lot.
Thank you, Mr. Peet. Mr. Wax.
I am very in favor of the skate park. I grew up with one, and it was a major convening ground for youth and everyone to really do a hobby, be healthy, have fun. As far as GW Park, I think that area is definitely underutilized since it's designated as a recreation zone. Ultimately, after the studies come out, I don't know if it will be picked because of a variety of factors. But I want it to happen regardless. That's the most important thing. And I don't think we could keep on saying, well, this location or this location might be better. We have to decide after this analysis on a final place. So it will happen.
Thank you. Okay. Now, Mr. Wax, you're going to go first with the next question, which is, what do you know about Pacific Grove that qualifies you to be the mayor of this town?
Well, I am a father of two who has moved here from other places and has seen how other cities operate. I've seen how cities operate in our region. And I could identify the ways to make things more vibrant. I think we live in a beautiful place, but we need to offer more for youth, more for businesses, support, tools, resources. And that is why I am best at, the best person for this job, I think. I'm offering a new point of view, and I do really have an urgency to get things done.
Thank you. All right. If anybody else has questions, please be sure to get them to the ladies in the back. Mr. Peet.
So just briefly, my background in city government, I was on the recreation board for four years, and then I was elected as a council member for four years, and now I've been mayor for four years. So I have experience in city government representing you. And perhaps one of the biggest attributes of being on city council is listening and being respectful of all people's opinions and hearing all the inputs and making the best decision for the community as a whole.
Thank you, Mr. Peet. So you are going to go second. First on this question, in terms of your leadership, apart from reliance on hopes of raising city funds through marijuana dispensaries and more hotels, what are you willing to cut or eliminate from the city budget to bring us into financial health?
Okay. Well, I'm going to have to argue about the premise of that question, because we've had reserves at 35%. That's been our policy for a number of years now, and we maintain that even in the face of declining revenue from sales tax and tourist tax. And so we know how to cut services. Our city staff took an effort to take a furlough. So we know how to make the tough decisions if it comes to that. But I think we're in good shape financially. We have been for quite some time, so I don't anticipate further cuts in services, and I hope we'll get some more roads and sidewalks done.
Thank you, Mr. Peet. Mr. Wax.
Yes. In my estimation, I agree with Mayor Peet. I don't think too much could really be cut from the budget, especially with furloughs during COVID and the reduction in services. We are operating pretty leanly right now, and I would also like to increase services and also, you know, bike share programs and more services for the residents. The question was, what else would I cut? Again, I do think that we're operating pretty leanly, and I don't have any recommendations at this time about what to cut.
Thank you. So to follow up question to that then, is how are you going to raise revenue if you're not going to cut anything? Mr. Wax first, Mr. Peet second.
Yes. So there are a variety of things. I think the TOT tax from a variety of hotel projects will increase revenue. I think perhaps a cannabis dispensary will also raise revenue a bit. But really, we also need businesses that are active and contributing more downtown to our tax revenue. We have a ton of vacancies downtown, and it is a blight, and it's not contributing to the atmosphere of our town. So we need to get more people in those businesses to contributing to our tax revenue.
Thank you, Mr. Peet.
I'd like to see more business revenue come into town, more successful businesses. I think that is certainly a key lever for bringing in additional city revenue. Am I in favor of new taxes? That sounds like the premise of this question. And I want to thank the voters, you all, for approving the half-cent sales tax, and I think that's been a lot of help. And I'd like to see us live within our means. I don't see a new tax measure out on the horizon that I'm very excited or excited at all about.
Thank you, Mr. Peet. So the next question is, do you believe that there's any reason to doubt the integrity of our elections, either local or national? Nope?
I'll say no. I don't think there's a nefarious plot to ruin the election here.
Mr. Peet.
And I'll agree with that. I haven't seen any evidence, but, you know, I don't go down to the Monterey County election, well, I did go down to the Monterey County Elections Department recently, pick up some voter registration material, but I don't go down there, and I haven't personally checked. But I haven't seen any evidence, newspaper articles, exposes on our elections, so I feel pretty confident that they'll be run correctly.
Thank you, Mr. Peet. Okay. So the next question is, would you be supportive of a measure to tax second homes to increase revenue?
A tax on vacant homes. Well, recently, that item has gained some traction, and I definitely see the attraction with it, that as homeowners, we're happy to see people come in and buy homes and kick up our home values. But on the other hand, it leaves vacant homes, and we could use some money for additional affordable housing. I'm going to have to punt on a clear answer to this, because this might come in the near future before council. And so I want to keep an open mind and hear all the issues associated with it. I will tell you one thing, it's associated with it is, how do you define a vacant home? You know, and who's going to be monitoring that? So there's a number of things that will have to be sorted out before we even start looking at it.
Thank you.
Can I ask a clarification? This is a second home or a vacant home?
It says, do you support the tax on vacant, no, a measure to tax second homes to increase revenue?
Not second homes in general. I think, well, the mayor didn't stay in position, but if a home is vacant and it's denying the city revenue and also a place to live for people who do want to live here, I think there should be a tax. Again, the people not being in those houses denies our city of revenue. Yeah.
Okay. All right. Next question. And Mr. Wax, you're going to go first.
Yes.
Okay. Would you support a tax on vacant commercial real estate to encourage greater occupancy?
Yes, I would. There have been a few stories about landlords basically purposely keeping places vacant, which I don't quite understand, but maybe as a tax benefit to them. Or the capital expenses to repair a downtown building for historic businesses might be too much for them. That's something that has to be addressed separately, and I think maybe the city should offer services or more help for rehabilitating historic properties. But yes, if a place is kept vacant purposely, I think it is a detriment to the city, both aesthetically and from an economic perspective.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wax. Mr. Peet.
I'm going to go out on a limb here, because I think this question came up for council discussion a few months ago. I definitely lean towards against the tax on vacant businesses downtown. I think the much better solution, instead of penalizing our local businesses, we should be helping them find ways to streamline the regulations, alter them in such a fashion that existing businesses can be more successful and attract new businesses downtown. That's the real solution.
Thank you, Mr. Peet. Okay. Next question you get to start with. How is the American Tin Canary Project, environmental project, sound when up to 70 historic Monterey cypress trees will have to be replaced by potted trees? Also, please address the traffic that the hotel will bring.
Okay. We have two hours, right? So if you might have listened in on the marathon council meeting on the ATC, it was, the permitting was approved by council in January 6 to 1. I was one of the six. We imposed 77 conditions, a wide range of conditions, protecting harbor seals, trees, traffic, et cetera. And I think that, and now it will come before the Coastal Commission. It's on appeal. So I'm comfortable, I already voted, I'm on the record, with the conditions for that project, and I put a few on there myself. And I think as long as they're implemented properly, I think it'll be okay. Let's see what the Coastal Commission has to say.
Thank you, Mr. Peet. Mr. Wax.
Yes. As far as I understand, majority of the trees that are being removed were planted in the 70s, which may not qualify them as being historic in my estimation. And also, they are largely non-native plants. So the development is planting 48-inch-tall, four-foot trees, and they will be native to California, which I think would behoove the area for environmental reasons. And they're also planting more trees in totality than what is there now. So they may not look as majestic right now, but over time, they will, I hope.
Thank you, Mr. Wax. Okay. The next question, which you, Mr. Wax, are going to start, is, could you please comment on the cannabis dispensary with respect to the revenue versus the liability securities issues that such a business might bring? Thank you.
From a legal perspective, no, but I believe that almost every other city in the region has a cannabis dispensary, and they're not being held liable for any, what was the phrasing of the question?
Liabilities and security.
Yes. They are not being held for any liabilities with security. I don't see rampant crime around dispensaries in other areas or anything like that. So I don't know if that's, that question is leading or not.
Thank you, Mr. Wax. Mr. Peet.
Well, security around any cannabis dispensary would be, the regulations would be in part of the permitting process. And when we talked about cannabis, well, now it's been three years almost, we got the chief police involved as to what are the security issues associated with cannabis shop and how would they be addressed. So I'm expecting it would be part of the permitting discussion with city staff and PD.
Next question, and Mr. Peet, you're going to go first. The city is under the gun to allow many new housing units to be built in the next three years. Do you think these new housing units should be single-family homes, condos, ADUs, or rental units?
All of the above. I mean, the crux of our state mandate for adding affordable homes is just that it's affordability. It's not the size of the home, but obviously, larger, the large, single-family dwellings are going to be the most expensive. So if we're going to make, or try, to put in place regulations to meet the state mandates for low-cost housing, they're going to have to be smaller units.
Thank you, Mr. Peet. Mr. Wax.
Yeah, I also agree. It'll be a mix. Although I think single-family homes would only be on infill developments, not any areas where there's currently commercial, which is where I would prefer mixed developments or condos or rentals. We need this, we need a mix of housing to both be sustainable environmentally and economically. And any options are for the best, for the better.
Okay. So, Mr. Wax, you're going to go first. The question, next question is, state your view on limits to growth. What increase in density and traffic do you want?
I am personally for revising the parking zoning. I actually forget what it is right now, but I would be in favor of not having a parking minimum for any new developments to encourage public transportation, bikes, walking, to make it more like a hometown and sustainable, compact development. The other part of that question was, is your fresh memory? Oh, limits on group. We have a four-and-a-half-square-mile area, and we have protected forests and wildlife areas. So again, I think we should provide housing areas in the infill developments and redevelop commercial areas for mixed use to hit our state mandate.
Thank you. Mr. Peet.
We're going to be having an extensive community outreach program, and I think I saw our community development director here in the room. Not to put her on the spot, but she's going to be in charge of getting feedback from everybody to answer that particular question. So it's premature to say, this is the answer. We already have on the books zoning that allows for more denser housing, and we might, and we'll be probably looking at changing that zoning to add denser housing, the possibility of denser housing. And there was another part of that. Well, there's parking, and there's height and lot coverage. Those are the key parameters that tell us how much housing on a parcel. So we'll be looking at all that, getting your feedback.
Thank you, Mr. Peet. Okay. So one last question, and then we're going to go to the sum up. It is extremely difficult for many workers to find affordable housing in Pacific Grove. Is it possible for the city to help these workers in any way?
We're going to try, that's for sure. I think to have a viable community, we need to be able to house the workers in this community, and that's the business people, the shopkeepers, the teachers. And so we need to find ways, city government doesn't build, that's not, we're not in that business, but we are setting the regulatory environment to encourage the right development in the city. And now, I think most people would agree, the right development is to look for ways to encourage affordable housing. And we'll be looking for money for grants. We'll look at projects on city parking lots, et cetera. There's quite a range of possibilities there on our Welcome Home Affordable Pacific Grove website.
Thank you. Mr. Wax.
Yes. Again, we should look at all options and review plans. As you may know, I am not from here. I moved here recently. And in our short time here, we've known two or three families who've had to leave the state because of housing with kids. That's a huge disruption for the kids, for the family, and for our area. It's a huge drain on stability. So if we can offer for condos, financing programs for rent, maybe assistance with working with the school district, I think we should look into all those options, for sure.
Thank you, Mr. Wax. All right. So we're going to do the sum up now, because we are ahead of schedule, because we got lots of questions for the council, but not as many for the two of you. I'm going to give you each two minutes for this final sum up. And Mr. Peet, you get to go first, even though, see, this is just to confuse you, so we can double back. But since you went second on the intro, you get to go first on the sum up.
All right. Thank you, Mary Ellen. I'm going to be merciful. I only have a one-minute closing speech. So anyhow. It's been a real honor and privilege to represent you and be mayor the last four years. After tonight, I trust you will ask more questions of the candidates, and I know you will go home and discuss the candidates with friends, family, and neighbors. Of course, think about providing more feedback to council. Send us emails, call in on Zoom during council meetings for attendant person, even after this election. It's always great to see folks in. It's always great to see folks in, in person. This is so wonderful. Thank you again for being here tonight and taking part in this important event.
Thank you, Mr. Peet. Mr. Weck?
Yes. I want to echo Mayor Peet's sentiments. Thank you, Mary Ellen, and thank you to the League of Women Voters, and thank you all to showing up and participating in democracy and conversation. An exchange of ideas is one of the reasons why I ran, and why I hope to win and lead Pacific Grove into the future. I want to make it clear that I'm not voting tonight. I've stated my opinions, and maybe they've been blunt or brisk, but I'm big on information. If this, if some of these items ever came up to vote, I would definitely hear all viewpoints, and I want to make an informed decision, always. I have spent my career a lot in design, and often, when you're a designer and art director, you bring your favorite direction or look to the table, and then other stakeholders are like, no, not that one. So, you are flexible, and you change your mindset, and you work for the better good of the whole group. And that's what I hope to do as mayor. And I thank you all so much, and please talk to me afterwards and ask more questions. Thank you.
Thank you both very much for coming and answering our questions. We're going to have a five-minute break, and we'll have the council candidates come on. Thank you. Welcome back to the second half, second forum here for the evening. And we have six candidates. As you can see, this is the order that they pick the numbers, and it should be way easier this time, because I don't have to have everybody back-to-back and switch back and forth. So, but the other way doesn't work either, because I can't have the same person go first every single time. All right. So, the way this is going to work is you get your two-minute introduction, and Ms. Beck's going to go first, and then we will move our way down the line. And then, when we turn around to second, the first question number one, Ms. Vining will answer first. Question number two, Mr. Chacklin will answer first, and we will go down and around. All right? So, we've got questions. If you have more, get them to the ladies in the back. Ms. Beck, question number one.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters, the Chamber of Commerce, and I see school board members here, and council members, and the residents, thank you for attending this evening. I am Jovi Beck. I am a native of Pacific Grove, born and raised on Nineteenth Street. Caledonian Park was a big part of my life growing up, and my rec leader, Charlene, is here. When I saw her, I got very emotional. Rec department was very important to me as a child growing up. Over the years, I have learned through my grandmother to give back to our community. She supported both the fire department and the police department through the holidays, making afghans, those type of things. That's the community we grew up here, up in Pacific Grove. Through the years, I have been a volunteer at our schools. I have power watched the entire high school one summer, along with Alex Rodriguez, who is another resident of Pacific Grove. We were recognized by the school board for that. And I continue to get involved with city government, and I sat on, as a chair, on the Economic Development Committee. I'm currently on the Planning Commission, and I am a business owner in Pacific Grove. I have children and grandchildren, and I am one of four generations still living in Pacific Grove. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Vining?
Yes, I'd also like to thank the League of Women Voters for this opportunity to bring all the candidates together. And I was born in Chong. I grew up on Forest Avenue. A hundred and ten years ago, my great-great-grandmother, she came over from Truor, California, out of the Salinas Valley for a better life. She was a widow to my great-grandmother. She was a widow at forty-eight years old. She had to work at Grove Laundry, a lodge at Pebble Beach. And she, she was just a equally wonderful woman, did a switch bar before retiring at the Forest Home Center. I went to high school class of nineteen ninety-seven, and I worked at Bookworks, Pier One Imports, and the Gabriel Bakery. I graduated with an associate's degree from MPC, bachelor's in organizational leadership, and I have a master's degree in IT project management, not to be confused with MBA. I am a renter, and I have a pretty old son. One of the reasons why I'm voting, or why I'm running, because I want him to have the same type of life that I grew up here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Vining. Mr. Chacklin?
Good evening, and I want to echo everyone else's thanks to the League of Women Voters. It's wonderful that I get invited anywhere, and this is a great place to be invited. I'm happy to run for office to get an invitation to visit someone. Holy kidding. My name's Mark Chacklin. I first came to PG in nineteen seventy-seven, came back to study at DLI, and I came back here, Lover's Point. I was here before they even had an aquarium, and it was a very different city. It's sort of the same city, but not quite as sharp and nice as it is. I grew up in New York City, which is almost the same as Pacific Grove. By part. But I can talk more about that, but unfortunately, I can't even say my name in a minute or two minutes, so this is going to be hard. I'm running for city council because of three, well, I'm running for city council, and I think I'm qualified for the following three reasons. I have, I have the expertise. I have the energy to do this. And finally, I have the moral values to do this. The expertise is, one minute, holy, the expertise is, is eight years on Planning Commission. I was a member, I was a secretary, I was a vice chair. If you saw the ATC hearing, you saw Mark Chacklin. Half of you are going to hate me, half of you are going to love me, but that's, that was me. I know the code of this city. I also know the, as all but dissertation PhD for, for public policy analysis for small, for cities and states, I understand the government process at this level very well. I volunteered, and the expertise is there, the energy is there. Anyone who knows me knows I dig into things, I use my critical thinking, I use my, my type-A personality to make sure, I come to any meeting knowing the questions and knowing the answers before it happens. And finally, the moral values. You need to have, be grounded in the core values of the city to execute what you want to do and to relate to the people. There are problems, housing, water. There's one other problem. On the city council now, it's kind of been a bubble. Great guys, great gals, all this great, but there's, it's less transparency and less communication from you. I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Chacklin. Ms. Rau?
Thank you so much. I'm going to rustle this mic from him online. Thank you to the League of Women Voters and to the PG Chamber for arranging this candidate forum. My name is Tina Rau. I lived in Pacific Grove for almost twenty years, and then I moved away for my career. I've moved all over the state, but PG is the one place I always felt like home. Almost six years ago, in anticipation of my retirement, we brought us, we bought a small house, fixed it up, and five years ago, made PG our forever home. There are a lot of issues facing Pacific Grove. Some of those include crumbling infrastructure, including sidewalks and streets. We should also be replacing our aging infrastructure with renewable energy. We need to invest in a recycled water delivery system, and we need to be responsible stewards of the environment. Living on the shore of the Monterey Bay Marine Sanctuary is a serious responsibility. We need a strong small business base in our four commercial districts. Our downtown is shrinking, and if the vacancies continue, we won't have a downtown to enjoy. My plans include creating an incubator space in one of the large vacant buildings, so that four to six small businesses can share the building until they build up their business and can move to their own spaces. I'd also like to have a city program that attracts PG students back home after they finish college or trade school, that helps them open new businesses in a restaurant or retail. We need a commercial kitchen space to help small restaurants get on their feet. We need to have an accessible playground space for our special needs kids in our community. I'd love to see a dog park and a skate park built, so that everyone has a community space to gather. I believe that if we put PG first, everything else will follow. We have a strong, if we have a strong small business base, we can use that tax revenue to complete the projects, as well as support any community-funded projects.
Thank you. Mr. Emilio?
This is on, right? Okay. You're probably not going to vote for my reelection, because I'm a Monterey High School Torian or. And I grew up in Monterey, New Monterey, but my dad always brought us over to Pacific Grove, Lover's Point. Many of you probably remember the saltwater pool. We would always jump in the pool, having a grand time there. Every weekend, we were there barbecuing. My dad was a World War II vet, and he told me, always do something for people, always do something for people, when I was real small. So, that's what my career has been. I'm presently a council member for Pacific Grove City Council. I'm also mayor pro temp. I'm also on the Board of Directors for the MST Project, MST. I'm a Board of Directors from there. I'm a city council representative for the Traffic Commission, the Museum Board. I have been on the Recreation Board also. Also, the police, I've also been on the Police Community Relations Board. My quick career is from police officer in Gilroy to teacher, coach, assistant superintendent, superintendent of San Jose Schools, and my wife and I retired back here in Pacific Grove. I have a lot of ideas. I want to continue with the projects we have on the books right now, and in the queue, and I'll go through them, I'm sure we've been asking questions about that anyway. So, that's my career, and I'll stop right there.
Thank you, Mr. Emilio. Ms. McDonald?
I'd also like to echo the thank yous to the League of Women Voters. I much appreciate the opportunity to get out here and meet everyone, because one of the things that I think is most important is making sure that our community is heard, and my goal is to be your representative. Although I'm not the one who's lived here the longest, I've been working my way to get here, because I've loved this town since childhood. My mom has been coming here since her childhood. Her dad had a business partner here, and so, this has always been the place that I want to call home, and I'm so happy I'm able to do that now, and want to make sure this is someplace that we can love being for, you know, all the time to come. I believe in order to have a vital community, it's critical that we support the needs of our residents, our businesses, and the environment. So, one of my top goals is to make sure we work to honor our stewardship of the environment. We are so fortunate to live in this beautiful place, and with that does come a responsibility. So, I want to make sure that we recognize that when we sell our city, we're often selling the beauty of our community, we're selling our environment and our nature. And so, by being good stewards, that supports our economy and bringing in the tourists to support us, and that in turn supports our residents by bringing in the revenue we need, so that we can get city services met, such as repairing our roads, putting in the sidewalks, and everything else that our community needs to remain thriving and vital. I want to make sure, as I said, that the community is heard, so I want to make sure we're always allowing opportunities like that, like this, for people to be part of. And I think we can tap into our community wisdom. We have a lot of wise people who can support us finding great solutions if we create a forum for that to happen in a more structured way. Homelessness, obviously, a key priority. I myself am also a renter, and I'm keenly aware of those issues, and want to make sure we find creative solutions for making sure our current residents remain housed as a top priority. I'm a researcher, I take a big-picture perspective, and I think that the more we look into options, we'll have great outcomes. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Question number one, and Ms. Vining, you're going to go first.
Okay.
Please tell us your top three strengths, which will help you in your role as a city councilman.
I'm a research analyst. I'm a dating analyst. And I'm also very good with listening to both sides. I grew up in a large family, and there was a lot of wanting attention, there was a lot of tugging pull. And these three attributes are the key. If you have been to any city council meetings, that's exactly what, you know, I can influence, but I'm not the only one making the decision. So, those are primarily where I come from, and I think that's important of everyone who is a city council member. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chacklin?
I started up, I, oh, thank you. I started out with exactly that, the top three reasons why I think I'm qualified. And I'll expand just a little bit in the thirty or sixty seconds that I'll be handcuffed into. Expertise, of course, in the Planning Commission. I've dealt with our code in our city for LCP for many years, sitting side-by-side with some of the best and smartest people in this town, figuring out what our environmental shelf should look like and how it should go forward. The city council didn't quite agree sometimes, but we went there. Secondly, energy. I believe you can't go into an issue, you can't get a packet and have staff says do this, and people sitting there saying, well, I guess we're going to do this, or not do this. No, you have to know beforehand, what are the ramifications, what are the second-tier influences, and dig into it. If you're not, and there are a couple of council members who do that. And the final thing is, you have to know the people here. I've been here since, on and off, basically since nineteen ninety-two thousand, nonstop. My grandkids went to Robert Downe for a year, my kid graduated, my stepson, and I know the people. I am the people.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald.
I told you I was going to wrestle this.
Ms. Rau?
Sorry. Thank you. I think three top strengths I would pick are listening, which I think is very important on the council, time management and organization, and being prepared. And I think if you've watched the council meetings, you'll see that oftentimes, people will say, well, I haven't read the, I haven't read the sheet, but, you know, I'll take a crack at it, and that doesn't serve the city. So, I think it's important that everybody feels prepared, everybody understands the issues, and I think it's important to meet with as many people as possible on an issue, especially these community-driven issues that are going to, that we're going to be faced with. So, listening, time management, organization, and being prepared.
Thank you. Mr. Emilio?
Thank you. One of the things, there's three things, there's a lot of things on the council, since I've been on the past four years, but three things I concentrate on is our CIP projects, improvements in the streets, sidewalks, et cetera. The other thing is affordable housing, that's very important. Plus, our physical, physical responsibility, that's very important, to make sure we're solvent in the city of Pacific Grove. We are not solvent in the city of Pacific Grove. We will all hurt. And, and real quick, we were at seven point five million during COVID, and we were able to bring that up to ten point eight million, which is above thirty-five percent. Thank you.
Ms. McDonald?
Thank you. I would say first is my research background has taught me to have a great critical thinking capacity, but also to look at the big picture and understand the consequences of our actions in a bigger way. So, I think that I can bring that to the table in a way that will help find creative solutions to our challenges in the city. Along with that also comes, also the listening. So, I think that there's a level of compassion that comes into listening and really wanting to hear and understand the problems of the people in the community, and find the best solutions in that way. And I guess the other thing I would say is, that's sort of related, is empathy, really being able to step into the shoes of people experiencing different situations and see things from their perspective. I think that that's a really valuable way to understand what people are going through and to best support services, do needs assessments, and find out the best ways to, to meet our community's needs.
Thank you. Ms. Beck?
Thank you for the question. In my past career, I was a consumer protection auditor, so retired from that sixteen years ago, so I'm very analytical. I'm a numbers person, looking forward to budget analysis as well for our city, also negotiations, and being a listener. So, I think that's key, especially in this position, and again, just truly listening to our residents. I don't think there's enough of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Question number two. It is extremely difficult for many workers to find affordable housing in Pacific Grove. Is it possible for the city to help in any way? How about helping seniors? And Mr. Chacklin, you're going first.
Yes, and yes. The city does help in certain ways right now. In fact, our- In fact, our mayor was, was a member of a committee that gives the loans for people who are in houses, who are in limited incomes, who can't fix their houses, and they can fix them up with lifetime loans to renovate your houses. If you're on a fixed income and you don't have the ability to sustain your house in that, go to the city programs. There are two programs. The second one, I haven't pulled up. But in terms of enough for the seniors, I don't think there's a focus of that. If you look, we're talking about affordable housing, we're talking about affordable housing for the, for the workers of this town. That's great, but they're also, our demographic is not only the workers. Our demographic is a lot of seniors like me, people who don't have a lot of hair. And you've got to, you've got to spend more money, put more planning resources into that and try to reshape some of our resources like we have, the Sally, Sally something Center. Thank you, Griffin Center, and that kind of thing. But even more than that kind of thing, start. We can do more.
Thank you. Ms. Raul?
Thank you. I think there's two components. One, the rezoning and to look at what our options are to add additional housing. And we're going to have to add additional housing, which in theory, according to the economics groups would say that that should bring down the cost of housing a little bit. My, and I'm glad you asked about the seniors because my biggest fear is the security of the seniors, especially the seniors that rent. And I have a neighbor around the corner, she's lived in the same apartment for 44 years. And all she needs is one really bad landlord to kick her out. And it, and it's frightening. And so I think we need to look at something to help our seniors create the security to stay in their home as long as they want. And that's what I'll work for.
Thank you. Mr. Emilio?
Could you repeat the question, please?
It is extremely difficult for many workers to find affordable housing in Pacific Grove. Is it possible for the city to help in any way? And equally for seniors?
Okay. In regards to affordable housing, we have ADU units, accessory dwelling units, which I've seen quite a few as I've walked the precincts through Pacific Grove. The city is very aggressive on splitting water meters so long as there's low cost water meters, low cost toilets, et cetera, in the, in there. In regards to the affordable housing, we do have a, in queue right now, we have behind the Lighthouse Cinema where there's going to be a building, build some affordable housing. And it's not yet, but it's in the planning stage. Also, on MST, I've been able to improve seniors in regards to drop, giving them rights to their, their medical services. And that's, so far I have on this particular, the three items here.
Thank you. Ms. McDonald?
Hi. Yeah, I actually think that's a really important topic. That's something that I definitely want to work on. I've been to both the housing meetings and I'm happy to see that the community is very on board with making sure we find strategies for keeping our current residents housed. And so I would want to use, I want to look into and research the opportunities we might have, whether that be grants or other city services, so that we can provide opportunities for people to, to get, as people have mentioned, ways to repair their houses and especially people to stay in their homes. I'm very concerned about our local workers and about our seniors because I've seen and heard a lot about people being priced out of their homes. And I think it's very important that we honor and value all members of our community and find creative solutions for making sure that we can keep people living in their homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Beck?
Thank you for the question. Affordable housing is kind of a two-part situation where the city could contribute if we had city property along with the school district. So working in conjunction with both the services and city property, we could create some affordable housing. And if not, it would be up to homeowners or developers to come in and make that happen for our community. The demographic I see is too different. So we have a serious need for childcare in our community as well. So with the affordable housing, the workforce probably could afford the housing, they can't find childcare. So it may not pertain to a lot of you in this group, but it truly is a serious concern in our community. And then senior housing are my two priorities. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ryman?
I go back to all of the years I started helping out my grandparents with their rentals. They had a few. And some of those families were very low income and they helped them because they knew that they needed extra help. So I think it's pulling back and really taking a step back and knowing who your neighbors are in order to determine who needs help the most. And that was follow, to follow through to my, 30 seconds. Obviously, this is a greater discussion than the 30 seconds. But I can't make all the decisions, even though I want to, I'd have to influence the rest of the council. But we really need to know who our neighbors are and who need housing the most. And thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Question number three, and Ms. Raul, you're going to start, is would you be supportive of a measure that would tax second homes to increase revenue to the city?
Thank you. This is an interesting issue because I think we have to define what is the second home and what is a vacancy. And I know that came up in the mayoral conversation as well. I think at this point, I don't think anything's off the table. And I think if the community wants to have a conversation, I think the council should be willing and, and open to listening to it. So I'm not saying it's off the table and I would love to hear the pros and cons, but I think we have to be careful how we administer it so that we don't single out, you know, people we don't want to single out.
Thank you. Mr. Emilio?
Thank you. Thank you. Second housing is a difficult situation in my, how I feel, but I think the council should have a discussion on this item. We can't make a decision in isolation. It's important that the whole council decides what happens to a tax. Personally, I feel that the taxes on second homes should not be taxed. That's my opinion. That's up to landlords. There's a whole discussion on that, so.
Ms. McDonald?
That's a challenging question. When people buy property, they, they often live in two different places at once and go back and forth between those homes. And so often those are viable homes for the people who live in them. I'm guessing the question might be tailored more for ones that sit vacant all the time and are taking housing away from our community, which is a concern that I think does need to be addressed. But I also don't agree that that is something for one individual to decide. I think it's something that's going to take a lot of community effort to determine what are our best options going forward to make sure that we increase housing availability for our community members and making sure that we're not levying unfair taxes. So we have to be very careful about if that was the option that the city and the council decided they wanted to go, we'd have to look very carefully at how we would do that in a fair and equitable way.
Thank you. Ms. Beck?
Thank you for the question. Second homeowners are property taxpayers. They pay their property taxes. There's no reason to tax them. They're already being taxed. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ryman?
A neighbor down the road grew up in a house that he inherited here. And him and his wife made a life for themselves up in the Bay Area. And he comes down, you know, twice a year for a month at a time. That was a house that he inherited, but he's a registered voter in the Bay Area. So it, you know, that kind of tugs at my heartstrings. When you have people in situations like this, it's not a cookie cutter situation. That's something that you have to have a conference about. But you have to step back and find out and really kind of understand what your, your base is in your population and that's things that we struggle with in Pacific Grove. Everyone has a story. So no, I, I don't agree with taxing them. Thank you.
Mr. Chalkwin?
Thank you for the question. I, I heard in the first panel and I didn't like, and I heard a little bit of it in the second panel, things that really scare me a little bit. First off, Debbie's 100% right. You get, you buy two houses, you're paying taxes on two houses. You're, are taxed right away. Whether, in fact, you can turn around and say, the good news is you're using less water because, because you're not there. There are a lot of, but there's a, there's an underlying premise here that keeps crawling up that bothers me. If it's open and no one's using this house, maybe we should, the community should get together and put someone in that house. Well, maybe they should buy the house if they want to put someone in that house. That person is the American success they've dreamed, they've worked, they inherited. If someone's earned a second house, for goodness sake, capitalism in our American system doesn't say, well, if you're not in it, we get to use it. Not in my country, not even. I've been in communist countries where they, they don't even do that anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next question, Mr. Emilio, is going to go first, and is downtown Pacific Grove has many vacant storefronts and business spaces. Do you have any ideas which would help alleviate this situation?
Well, being on the council for the past four years, I've, I do know there's some projects on the queue on some of those empty buildings. And I'll use example, Bank of America. Bank of America is going to have affordable housing on the top, commercial on the bottom. There's an antique store across from the old La Crema and that is probably pretty close to closing escrow and there'll be businesses in there. It's an art studio, its own commercial. Also, there is an antique store going across from Juice and Java. So there is things happening downtown and I know, I'm very familiar with, those are some of the projects I'd like to see through my next four years.
Thank you. Ms. McDonald?
I would say that I would like to find opportunities to encourage businesses to come into our community. So part of what we need is opportunities where people feel they want to be part of the community, they can come in and they can have a viable business. So I think that anything that we can do to support that that is within our means, that would be something I would really like to discuss. See what options people have, see what people are interested in, find what kind of services our community would like. We have vacant storefronts, this might be the time to think about what services are we lacking that we would like to invite in and how can we draw those kinds of people into our community to support our needs as residents?
Thank you. Ms. Beck?
Thank you for the question. You know, I continually hear that we have vacant storefronts. We have three vacant storefronts. So we don't have that many. When I was the chair on the Economic Development Committee, I proposed putting a website together that was updated. We had a very outdated website, so many businesses looking to come to Pacific Grove saw very outdated information. So they have started working on that. We have an updated website now where businesses from outside the area can now view what properties are available, what are median home prices, our population and those types of things. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ryman? I was just actually educated by Debbie Care to drive me. I, I think that we, we think that, that we have an issue with the storefronts. And, and we do. We want to retain those people and we want to see new businesses come in. So are there opportunities on the table to talk about how we retain these people, giving them grants, seeing them over the years? Are there any benefits to doing that? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chalkwin?
Thank you for the question. This is, this is, like, I agree with Debbie Beck to a certain extent. This is a problem looking for a, a solution, looking for a problem a little bit. We do have the, some storefronts that are open. The Bank of America closed down. You're going to lose, well, Chase is closing down a little bit right there. So we have these, these people closing, but that's sort of the part of business. My mom, you know, she stopped working to get, raise our six kids, you know, two or six whoa. And, and she turned around and when, when the kids were big enough to make into slave labor work, she decided to start a business. We started a little business and we found a location that was good for us, a need in the area. It was a dry cleaner and for like 10 years I slaved in that darn place, but it was a wonderful little business and it fed, it fit a need. How did she get help? A little bit of help from, from the community, their community planning. Debbie was on that Economic Development Council. That kind of monetary and resource support that the city can put secondhand out to the Chamber of Commerce is exactly the kind of leverage we can do.
Thank you. Ms. Raul?
Thank you. I talked a little bit in my opening statement about an incubator space and I think that's a great way. We've got large retail space without the hope of a large retail person coming in. And I don't really think that we want anything that's, you know, a large multinational company coming in. So I think the incubator space is the way to go and divide it out. But unfortunately, I think that what's happened over the years is these large generational landowners who have gigantic business and property portfolios, it's cheaper for them to take the tax write-off than it is to open up that business. And I think that the business should be leased at a fair market value and we should have more businesses in Pacific Grove. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next question, and Ms. McDonald, you're going to start. So if Pacific Grove doesn't raise taxes or allow marijuana stores, what items in the Pacific Grove budget do you propose to eliminate?
I would say similar to in the mayoral question. It sounds like we're already running pretty tight as far as what, what budget we're using. That is not actually for me to decide, I don't feel. I think that is something that has to come from committee. We need to look at where our money is being spent. Are there ways to use our money more efficiently so that we have more money available for our needs? So really looking at where we could find other solutions, things like I suggested, using our community members as resources. If we do that, we could then have more money available rather than needing to pay for consultants because that would give us the opportunity to utilize our local expertise. And then we could find solutions that actually address the problems of our community. So I think that is one way to look at that.
Thank you. Ms. Beck?
Thank you for the question. So our three top generating revenue sources are property taxes, sales taxes, and TOT taxes. I don't see a need for a dispensary to generate $100,000 in taxes, even though you're going to see a different number. It's my understanding that we are in a great position with revenue and reserves as well. So I think we just need to keep moving forward and focus on that, but I do not see cutting back on any of our services with the exception of our Cal-Am bills. And I encourage everybody to take a look at those, $750,000 during COVID to pay to Cal-Am to water our parks in Pacific Grove. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ryman?
I echo Debbie's sentiments completely. And, and I think in some ways when you're getting elected to an office such as a city council, is that not everything is on, you know, before you. Not necessarily the transparency aspect, but it is public, yet, you know, all of us are kind of dancing around certain things. But mainly, yeah, what, what Debbie echoed, I echoed what Debbie said. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chalkwin?
Chalkwin, you can call me Mark. That's great. First off, I'm going to say that I'm just fundamentally against the idea of the dispensary to, to start with. And the idea of compensating for it with additional funds, we can always get additional funds. You never have enough money in city government. I heard someone say here, we don't have a, a funding problem, we have a spending problem. But, but, but the thing of it is, I have to agree with Joe Emilio when he said that, you know, our reserves are pretty good. Our general reserve is, it increases according to our budget 2.5% every year. We, and our, and our general reserve is, is 10% above the minimum. So, so the money, we're not, we don't have to panic. We don't have to put our hair on fire. Expenses are high, 6.6 calpers every year, increasing. We, we're spending 50% more this year on our legal bills, 50% more in the budget. We don't have enough money there. So maybe, maybe the way to do it is good fiscal budgeting is the more important thing.
Thank you. Ms. Raul?
Thank you. I think the cannabis situation will be addressed at the ballot on November 8. I think who gets cut is also a little premature given our financial stability at this point. I would always vote in favor of raising revenue than, than cutting services because the more you cut, is it fire, is it the police, is it public works? And I think it would be bad to, to make those decisions. But I think if we can bring more businesses into downtown, if we can raise revenue through sales tax in that way, I think that we're not going to have to worry about who to cut. Let's, let's just build up the business base. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Emilio?
Yeah, thank you. I've already related that, you know, we were down to 7.5 million dollars. I've already related that, you know, we were down to $7.5 million in our reserves during COVID situation, and we brought it up to almost 10.8 million, it's supposed to be 10 million, so we're at 10.8 million. City's in financial, is in good hands right now. The state of California told our finance department, two thumbs up if we ever run into another COVID situation. And that's thanks to our finance department for doing that. The other thing is that cannabis has been, a 30-second, okay, cannabis has been talked about for, you know, council for three or four years, and finally got a subcommittee that's going to meet to the voters. Now, I'm a registered voter, and my prior profession was police officer, so you know where I stand, okay? Where? How do you stand?
Nope, you can't speak.
Okay. No rowing from another time. Mr. Emilio, finish? You're done?
Yeah, I think I got to stop. Oh, I didn't get a stop.
She was giving you... You had about 10 seconds.
Whoa!
I didn't stop you.
The voters get to decide on the cannabis.
Thank you. All right. Question number six, Ms. Beck, you're going to go first. What is your position on the draft forest management plan for Washington Park and your position on the proposed skateboard park on the south end of Washington Park at Cynex and Aldis?
I am in favor of the park plan. I am not in favor of the location of the skate park. That is a area that is protected, in my opinion, even though the zoning is recreation, that is not the location for the skate park, and I certainly hope the city reconsidered and revisits other areas. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vining.
If there was a secret thing to do, then someone would already be doing it. And I also agree that George Washington Park isn't the best location for a skate park, but I do know that we need a skate park. And I grew up with plenty, plenty of people, friends, and I also had a cousin that was really good skateboarder, and a surfer, and a snowboarder. All of these things tie in. They're all sports, Olympic sports. So we have to decide where it's going to be, and have more than just a discussion, we need to decide, because we're not getting any younger. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chacklin.
I agree with the forest plan. George Washington Park is a treasure. It's sort of like, this is going to sound corny, it's sort of like Central Park for our little town. It's a long, multi-block-long environment. If you go into Manhattan building, 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 all the same, you get into Central Park, and it goes on for blocks and blocks and blocks. And you start walking from one part of Sinex in George Washington Park, and you wind up in like Egypt or something, you just keep going for days. That's a wonderful little park, and it isn't underutilized because it's a park, and the bird watchers are there, the dog watchers are there, the people who want to escape from people like me are there. It's all there, that's a great park. In terms of the skateboard, I 100% agree, we need a skateboard park. I don't think it's, I think Debbie's right, I don't think this, and Darla's right, it's not quite the right place. I think maybe on the school, around the school, in the air, something like that, but it has to happen. But the idea of putting it right into that park is two downs for me. One, you're going to chop into the park, and two, I'm stuffed.
You can finish your sentence, Mark.
Okay, that's right. And the second thing that's going to happen is, you're going to have the kids crossing back, school and back, school and back, and you're creating a chaos that it should be more centralized. Thank you.
Ms. Rowell?
Thank you so much. You know, I'll say generally that I think that input from the subject matter experts inside of our community who have been doing the work over the years should have more weight in the city council meetings, in my opinion. I have been very popular amongst the 12-year-old boys at the farmer's market, and the number one question I get is, "Do you believe in a skate park?" And I, yes, I do. I don't think that George Washington Park is appropriate, because my number one concern is safety. And if the kids can't ride to and from that skate park safely, if they can't navigate the cars and other obstacles as they're trying to do it, it's not going to do any good to have a skate park in place where kids are going to get hurt. So for me, safety's my number one priority. Let's look closer to a school or other open space.
Thank you. Mr. Emilio?
Okay. The Recreation Commission, already, it's been to the Recreation Commission, Washington Park was their number one choice, Arnett Park was another spot, the school district property was another spot. It has not come to the district office yet, and, I mean, the school, it has not come to the city council yet. For me to say I want it at Arnett Park, then that wouldn't be right when I, if I'm reelected to be on the council. You cannot state where it's going to be. I am for a skate park. I was a skater from the days down Prescott Hill, so I'm all for skate parks. We allotted funds when there was no traffic. We allotted funds already from the Joe Biden funds, I call them, to allot money, $158,000 for a skate park, I'm all for skate parks.
Thank you. Ms. McDonald?
Thank you. I also agree that it's critical to listen to the input of the people who are the ones who have been caring for George Washington Park before we make any decisions. I have serious concerns about the current draft plan, because some of the suggestions it's posed are ones that would actually destroy the forest habitat, because this is a natural park, not a manicured park. And so I think we need to understand that distinction, understanding that undergrowth supports a lot of the wildlife that live in there that don't necessarily survive up in the trees. So we need to have a balanced plan for ensuring we're protecting the wildlife in that environment. So I would like to see us looking back to our original plan and listening to our current people who work on that project. I also think the skate park could be a great idea for the kids, because I think it does, as they say, build a lot of grit and teach great skills for children and give them a great activity to work on. I also agree with George Washington Park, it's not a good location for that because of the environmental impact it would have, and it's not a fit for that particular neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next question, and Ms. Vining, you're going to go first.
Okay.
Do you support the American Tin Canary Hotel project as the current council approved it in January of 2022, which is now on appeal to the Coastal Commission? Or do you think the Coastal Commission should require the size to be reduced to the current proposed 225 rooms, two swimming pools, and 89% site coverage?
I have to tell you, I want to say that one of the candidates or, yeah, said it's a million-dollar question, and I absolutely agree with them. This is the thing, any of the candidates here are not going to be able to make a decision because it's already been made, and they're on appeal to the Coastal Commission, which is now going to be in November. So with that being said, it's about discussion from that point, and we're not there yet. So we have a little bit of time to, for the candidates coming in, or for the council members that are coming in, there's going to be much discussion from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chacklin?
I made a decision on that hotel. I was the chair of the Planning Commission, I was the vice chair and was the chair pro temp for the meeting, that did not pass that hotel, and then was called up by the city council to pass it 6 to 1. I have three, I think, there is no project that goes into the city of Pacific Grove that is just as presented passed. It doesn't happen. Even if you yourself are a homeowner and you want a project, they're going to say, "Put in a curb, reduce everything," changes. That happens. This hotel basically made a couple of cosmetic changes, but the three critical changes that I thought were incredible, and water, when we talk about it, were, they didn't telemetry the seals for acoustic protection for takes. They didn't do it. They wouldn't do it. Would that hurt them? It actually would have helped them. They refused to do it. They refused to do mitigation measures for Slowed Avenue. Slowed Avenue is going to become Times Square, if they go there, or a truck stop. And finally, they didn't, they just decided to chop down the trees. CS Lewis all over again, this hideous strength.
Thank you.
Oh, I was just starting.
It's too bad we're on the roll. The ATC was voted on, the voters in 2016 voted to rezone for a hotel. I'm not going to overturn the will of the voters, but what I will do is commit that whatever happens through this council, that we will make sure that it's done and it's done correctly, that it's respectful to the environment. And I think it's important that, you know, we've listened to community, I mean, there's been so many meetings about this, and, I mean, candidly, this was 2016 it was voted on, it's 2022, almost six and a half years later, and we still don't even have a date in front of the Coastal Commission. So, you know, I know that this is a concern for folks, and I totally understand it, but I'm going to make sure that when it's done, it's done right, and it respects the environment, it respects the city and the residents, and that we get a really good product that makes our town better.
Thank you. Mr. Emilio?
Thank you for the question. We voted already on the ATC project, 6 to 1. I was one of the six on council to vote for the ATC project. Of course, it's before the Coastal Commission right now, and I think on the bigger picture of the ATC project, if you could look forward to it, consider the employment, the amount of people that we employed in Pacific Grove, they're going to have conference rooms situated where they'll be able to, where our PG breakers, graduation ceremonies we held there, but it is voted 6 to 1, it's before the Coastal Commission, and right now, we're in a queue right now, so.
Thank you. Ms. McDonald?
Thank you. Yeah, as was already stated, this is not in the hands of the incoming city council, of course, it is in the purview of the Coastal Commission now. I do have some concerns about it. As it stands right now, there will be traffic issues, there are environmental impacts. I'm concerned about the environmental impact of removing the trees, because native trees that are, you know, well-established and provide cover for the nesting birds would be compromised and replaced by smaller trees that would never reach that same stature, and so I find that concerning. What I also agree with is that we may be able to have a role in ensuring that we implement it in a way that does the best for the environment and for our community, is respectful of the neighbors, addresses the parking, the traffic issues that will be of concern, and can be actually a productive thing for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Beck?
Thank you for the question. I support any project that is environmentally sound for our community. One thing that I've heard time and time again is traffic, but do you all realize that every person coming to the aquarium comes down the same road and stops one block before the ATC building? So the traffic should be a non-issue, and yet I keep hearing that time and time again, but yet we allow hundreds of thousands of visitors to come into our community one block away. So I just wanted to point that out, but I do support any project that is environmentally sound. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. The next question, Mr. Chacklin, you're first.
Uh-huh. We'll do this.
How should the city of Pacific Grove resolve the lawsuit brought against the city by former police officer Gonzalez?
Oh, great question. Okay, it's not wise to talk about pending legal litigation in the city of Pacific Grove, and I won't offer any kind of, you know, a Solomon-like decision for something like that, you can't. It'd be, it's just a bad idea. I will say this, that I'm not privy to all the details of the facts. From what I've read in the papers, it's, you know, it's a he said, she said, is he having these hate speech things, or is he being accused of going over the top for political motives? I don't know. But I do know one thing, that the judicial system will peel that onion back again and again and again, and we're going to get some resolution. And whether he's right or whether he's wrong, I think I can sit back and I trust our judicial system, and they'll come up with an answer one way or the other.
Thank you. Ms. Rowell?
Thank you. I can't believe I'm agreeing with Mark, but I also think it's pretty irresponsible to weigh in on pending litigation, especially given the topic. I think that when you look at, you know, what is going on, and I think Mark is right, that it's going to go through the legal system, and the outcome's going to be based on legal theory and legal practice, so I think we need to let it play out, and then we can comment on it when it's all done.
Thank you. Mr. Emilio?
The Michael Gonzalez question is in closed session right now. It's pending litigation. I'm not allowed to discuss anything about the Michael Gonzalez case. It's confidential, and since I've been on the council, it's been in closed session, and it's pending litigation.
Ms. McDonald? Thank you. I would have to echo that. I'm not an attorney, and even if I were, it is not my place to be discussing it. That will be for the attorneys to present their cases, or the jurors to decide, were his rights violated? And I think it does, however, point to an opportunity for us to look carefully in the future to make sure that we don't have a similar incident happen again, and we just go about it in a different way.
Thank you. Ms. Beck?
Thank you for the question. I too cannot make comment on that. We don't know all the facts of the case, and I just hope our management is making the right decision. Thank you.
Ms. Vining?
And finally, I used to work in a law office, and my boss was, is my mentor, one of the best mentors I ever had, and his advice was, less is more.
Yeah. Thank you. All right. Next question, and Ms. Rowell, you're going to go first. So what is your experience doing volunteer work in Pacific Grove?
Thank you for the question. You know, volunteering is very important to me. In 2013, I won a volunteer award from President Obama. It's been, thank you, it's been a core value of my entire time. I've spent time volunteering at vaccination clinics, I've spent time volunteering at a city board and commission, and I think it's a core value that I'll take with me as a volunteer member of the city council. That is something that giving back to the city is very important to me, especially since the city, I feel, has given me so much, and I couldn't be happier to live here and volunteer here.
Thank you, Mr. Emilio.
Thank you. There's been numerous things I've been on, but most recently, the classic car auction, and I helped control traffic at Forest and Lighthouse there, and Mo Amaro was my boss that day. So I had to carry the torch on that. So the other thing is that for volunteering in the community, I've done three memorials in my own time. One was COVID, one was 13 soldiers that got killed in Afghanistan, we did that at Lover's Point, Veterans Day, and actually, there was another one. I'm also a member of the Italian Heritage Society. Thank you, Tina. Also Uvalde incident with those 19 students that got killed. Also, I'm on the Italian Heritage Society and the Italian Catholic Federation, and I volunteered quite a few hours with them, usually everything Italian.
Thank you. Yeah, I actually, I'm really enjoying volunteering with the community, working on both the Harbor Seal Project to better understand our members there and to report that to the public, and also the Black Oyster Catcher Monitoring Program. There are other species that is on the verge of potentially being on the endangered list, and so we're looking at how can we better understand them to better understand what resources they need. The other aspect of that that I really like is educating people, because one of the things we do when we're out there at the fence, we're out doing the bird watching, is we are educating the public, and it's really great to see how especially young people, but adults alike and tourists, they get so excited as they learn more that they plan their vacations around coming here so they can observe it, and there's really a lot of excitement that comes, and that's a great way to build a sense of ecology and a sense of caring about the planet, is to educate people on what resources we have.
Thank you. Ms. Beck?
Thank you for the question. Volunteering just in Pacific Grove, during COVID-19, I created the adoptive lock for businesses in downtown. We had ambassadors that would help at the stores to monitor people coming and going, making sure they had sanitizers for their hands. I volunteered in the classroom at Robert Downe School. I created the adoptive wing at Pacific Grove High School, which again consisted of power washing the school, the lockers, trimming the trees. I chaired for the EDC, and I was also commissioner on the EDC, commissioner, a commissioner for the Planning Commission, and then also myself and my six... a commissioner for the planning commission, and then also myself and my six-year-old, we do beach cleanup at Lover's Point Beach. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Vining?
This actually goes back to community service ever since high school. And I remember the coolest community service opportunity I had was to work for the Wheels on Wheels. And so I tried to follow that and continue with my relationships there and volunteer when I can. I've also worked with the iHelp ever since I was in seventh grade and have continued to do that. And lastly, I'm going to share with you that a lot of my volunteer work has been with hospice care and also with the families who just need someone to talk to in their time of grieving. And sometimes they just want to hear a soft voice listening to them. And that's one of the best rewarding things because mental health is a big deal. Thank you.
Mr. Chalkwin?
Okay, well, aside from the planning commission, I would say within the community itself. By the way, I was in the Army 34 years, private to colonel, and they taught you never volunteer. And I can see if you're in the Army and you're working 24/7, it makes sense. But when you're in Pacific Grove and retired, put your hand up. I've volunteered for, I guess I can say, St. Vincent's de Paul. I worked for them for about seven years. And they are a wonderful organization who gives out food Tuesdays and Thursdays. They gave out, if you're homeless, they give you tents and sleeping bags. And it's a great organization that I did a lot of times. Also, it was renting treasures and utilities. I volunteered to be one of the voting people in the voting precincts. And by the way, I could tell you, ours was legal. No one cheated us. I volunteered to be a treasurer in my HOA. I'm an HOA person. And finally, I volunteered to fix the telescopes in all the Monterey County libraries that have free telescopes. Ours doesn't have a telescope yet. I'm going to get that. But they need to be columnated and they need to be adjusted, and I volunteered to do that every time. So I do.
Okay. Mr. Emilio, you're going to go first. The next question. How do you feel about bringing back the Feast of Lanterns?
Could you repeat the question?
Several times.
We, I understand the question. Thank you. We on the council canceled the Feast of Lanterns several months ago on the 7-0 vote. And I was one of them.
Ms. McDonald? I think that this is an issue that needs to be addressed with sensitivity. I understand that it is a community event that the community loves. And I think creating something new that the community loves is a wonderful idea. But I do think that we have to honor the cultural insensitivity that was tied to this particular event and basically separate those two things. So we're creating something new for the community that does not appropriate culture of other people.
Thank you. Ms. Beck?
Actually, the committee is working and they have a new name. It's called Festival of Lights. And they are looking to bring something back this summer in Pacific Grove. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Vining?
For residents who have been here for a really, really long time, I know some of those personally, and they are heartbroken. That doesn't mean that it's going to come back. I am really excited about the ambassadors group. And just knowing that they're going to be doing the Festival of Lights, that actually is part of the things that are going back to tradition, goes back to Chautauqua Hall even, that these are celebrations and we need new celebrations of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chalkwin?
Wow, this could be unpacked for about an hour. Okay, so I want the Festival of Lights. I think it should never have been canceled. It was a travesty that I didn't get more involved earlier instead of my letter and step into it. Okay, in my former career, 20 years of my 34 years in the Army was spent as a fail. That's a foreign area officer. That means you go to different cultures. And you don't shoot them, you deal with them, you work in them. One of my cultures was China. Okay, I spent a lot of years in China. I know a lot about China. I know about as much about China as the guys that you hauled in as experts. When the Festival of Lights went on, my brother-in-law, who's Chinese, I brought him to the Festival of Lights. And he wasn't culturally shocked. He turned around and said, hey, can I buy one of those tickets? And my wife's Chinese. The Festival of Lights is not a, the lanterns is not culturally insensitive. I'm telling you, and to have, and there's irony in this. When you have a Japanese-American telling you that the Chinese are going to be offended, think of the history of China, Japan, China. Think of America, China. You're getting, okay, I could go on.
He gave me $10 to stop me. We listened to hundreds of public comments over the course of not only the diversity and inclusion task force, but also the city council. And some of the stories on the impact of the way that the Chinese immigrants were treated in Pacific Grove, all the way back to, including the Festival, the Feast of Lanterns. I recall at the city council meeting, the mayor said specifically, if anybody in the community has got a better celebration, has a better community celebration, any idea, they would be willing to look at it. We're talking about a multi-venue, multi-day event. It's difficult to plan and the nonprofit that does it didn't want to. So, okay, I had a suggestion from my wife last night. Why don't we have the Otter Festival? And I thought, well, that sounds like a good idea. So what's here for the otters and the Otter Festival?
We thought of do that.
Question number 11. Ms. McDonald, you're going to go first. Why do you support or not support Project Home Key?
I think that it's very important to address the needs our community faces. So what I'm concerned about is have we done a proper needs assessment of the homeless we have in our community and the needs for that. I have some concerns about if we take federal funding that doesn't leave us in charge of how we run the program, could we find a better way to do that? I think that there are other ways to find creative solutions within our community to address the same problem in a way that best serves our actual community. And I would like to see us address that.
Thank you. Ms. Beck?
Thank you for that question. We have no resources in Pacific Grove to have a homeless hotel converted. I think we'd be doing a disservice to the homeless population. Also, we, again, I want to focus on, we need childcare in our community. We don't need a hotel converted for the homeless in Pacific Grove. Thank you.
Ms. Vining?
I, this is a real tricky question, but it's not tricky for me. We simply don't have the resources. And I do want to share that the people who are homeless in this area, there are some of them that don't want to rent. They choose not to rent so that they can save their money for their day-to-day. So they choose to live in an RV and take their use of the ocean by day and sleep in the neighborhoods by night. And that's been going on for, ever since I was a little girl. So this has been going on for quite some time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chalkwin?
When this came in front of the city council, I actually called in and recommended not endorsing it. For change, they listened. In this case, it wasn't well thought out. It didn't have an end state. It didn't have guaranteed monetization throughout the project. And it didn't even have a vetted, completed target to execute. It was a half-baked grab at getting a grant. Get the grant now or you'll lose it. And this, I'm going to talk about this in my closing, but a lot of the projects that come up are presented to the council, and God bless them, they got 500-page packets and more. I know I've sat and seen these things. It was, they're giving stuff that I wouldn't say garbage, but it's incomplete. And it's not, and it'll literally be written down and worked through. Without that, you can't make a decision, especially something like that has an $18 million price tag coming forward, giving and then taking later on. You can't do that without proper planning and fiscal, due to fiscal diligence. Didn't exist.
Thank you. Ms. Rowell?
Thank you. My concern with Project Home Key, and I think that there has to be an unhoused element to the projects that we're putting forward. My issue is what happens when the state or the federal commitment runs out? And then what are we supposed to do as far as funding? And so I think without, you know, being able to stretch that funding out as, you know, as long as needed, I think that's going to be the barrier, in my opinion. We need to make sure that if they're going to give us money to put up an unhoused solution, that that solution's got to be fully funded.
Mr. Emilio?
Thank you. When Project Home Key came up for an application, I was the lone wolf, shall we say, the lone consulman that sent to apply for this Project Home Key. It was shot down. This is part of the democratic process. But the thing about applying for an application, it's just to apply the application. And to give you an example, King City received $13.1 million on their last Project Home Key. The other thing is, I want to compliment the Pacific Grove Police Department because if a homeless person comes in this situation, they're Johnny on the spot in regards to helping those people and giving them outlets. And that's, we also have 28 homeless people in the city of Pacific Grove, and it will continue to grow. And we need to do something as a council. It's coming up on the agenda, and suddenly, it's going to be with the city, has to do something. We have an application ready to go.
Thank you. Okay. This is going to be the last question, and then we'll be going to final statements. So question number 12. Ms. Beck, you're going first. How, what is your plan to increase physical and social opportunities for our older children?
Older children? I mean, that could be 30, it could be 40. And I am a big supporter of the rec department. It was such a big part of my life. So I'm going to put that in that category as older. The rec department needs to improve. We don't offer services for our youth. The ones we have are very limited. When you go to sign up for a rec summer camp, it's limited to 20 children. And you have to call in by 9:00 AM and you're playing with a computer like signing on to Southwest Airlines. And so seriously, we need to expand that. We need to go back to the days when I grew up in Paladonia Park where I could spend all summer long there. Charlie would be there, Alton would be there, all taking care of us, and we had ice cream on Friday. So I just wish we could get back to a rec program that supports our youth in Pacific Grove. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Vining?
This is probably my favorite question of the night. The business owner isn't in this room right now, but I had a talk with her this morning. And I said, this is going to be one of my huge platforms for small businesses. She has a brand-new business, had a ribbon cutting earlier this year. And her business allows children with special needs up to our seniors who either have mobility issues or just want to get into the water. And it's a swimming business that she has. And what's great about that is that there's revenue for the city and you're also helping individuals. And what I think is the best thing is if we get like a little charter bus and have different ways of getting individuals up there for more mobility options. That would be great, and it also increases her business. Thank you.
Could you repeat it one more time, just to clarify?
How do you plan to increase physical and social opportunities for our older children?
My older children, I'm thinking of my son who has a 13-year-old grandson, like my grandson now. So that's a little bit different world and category for me. I'm not, I don't have a plan for older children. If you're talking teenagers right now, what are they going to do? And, you know, I used to joke, take our teenagers, put them in the freezer until they're 24, and they come out, they'll be great people because between that time, they're not great people. But that's not a plan. I can see that. But I would say that the rec services initiatives and these private initiatives are good. I would have to investigate it. I would have to solicit input from what's dynamic and available in our community before I'd be able to give you, oh, here's the right answer to that. Because frankly, I don't have the right answer, aside from the freezer.
Thank you. Ms. Rowell?
Parenting 101. I think the rec department absolutely needs to be fully funded. I think one of the things to do is to get kids off the couch and enough of this and get them out into the community. I think a skate park is a great way to do that for the older kids. And I think expanding one of the playgrounds to include an inclusive playground space for our special needs kids in our community. And that would include older kids as well, because I think they need a space desperately. And I'm not going to say anything about the pickleball court.
Thank you. Mr. Emilio?
Thank you. You mentioned older children, right? Is that, am I correct on that? Older children? So I've been thinking about that. That's a nice thing about going up last is, are we all older children? I think we all are older children. And, but the recreation department has done, we, and the council has funded extra employees for the recreation commission, recreation department. The other thing is, is that our, when I was on the recreation commission, I proposed a low-income application so that any student, older children that have problems trying to financially afford the recreation activities, they can apply, get an application done, and there's a sliding scale for low-income people.
Ms. McDonald? Thank you. You know, my answer to that would be really ask the age group that we're talking about what their needs are and what their desires are. The best way to create something that we people will use is to ask them what they want. Find out what they want, find out what we can develop that will help them to thrive, help them to become very contributing members of society. And I think that increasing vitality obviously is a good thing. And if they can come up with their own ideas of how they would like to do that, I think that that would be the best thing.
Thank you. We are going back now for the final. And we're going to go back. Ms. McDonald, you are going to go number one. And then Mr. Emilio, Ms. Rowell, Mr. Chalkwin, Ms. Beck?
Thank you so much. I really appreciate the opportunity to kind of get to know people more. I love it when it's a discussion back and forth so we can get more input, although we, of course, got some of that from the questions that were asked. I would love the opportunity to represent you and work towards ensuring the vitality of our community. It's, I think it's critical that we protect our wildlife and our environment as a means, not only for doing the right thing as our stewards of the protected reserve, but also for drawing in the tourists that we want to draw to our businesses to support the financial vitality so that we are then able to support all the needs of our community. It will take a village to make the changes we need to do. So I would love to be kind of a voice for everybody else who maybe isn't as vocal. And I'd love to represent you so that we can be united and powerful voice for our city. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Emilio?
Thank you. This is one of the things I've had some notes written down on. As a Pacific Grove mayor and pro town and council member of Pacific Grove for almost four years now, I plan to focus on the following. Making decisions what's best for Pacific Grove. That's very important. Everything I make is what's best for Pacific Grove. I think respect and honesty, if anybody knows me, I'm always respectful and honest with everybody. Physical responsibility, I've talked about that. Preserve Pacific Grove's natural environment and continue to promote and encourage Pacific Grove businesses and make sure it's environmentally sound. Improve streets, sidewalks, retain our valuable employees for the city of Pacific Grove, and encourage local employment. Recreation opportunities, already stated, skate park. Transparency at all levels of our government. And improve senior housing and medical services. And also look at our code of conduct always at council level.
Thank you. Ms. Rowell?
Thank you. And thank you again to the lead of women voters and to the PG chamber. You've heard a lot tonight about our You've heard a lot tonight about everyone's vision for Pacific Grove. Mine is one of optimism and looking forward to what's possible. We can build a city that benefits from a community space, revitalize our downtown and prioritize our infrastructure. We can create and protect our seniors and their housing to ensure that they can stay in the home that they've been living in. I consider myself a public servant, not a politician. I've not taken any money or solicited or accepted endorsements from any agencies or business who may have business in front of the city council. I want to do what's best for PG and the residents. You can read more about my plans visiting tinaforpg.com. You can help the campaign by placing yard signs and hosting a gathering. And I thank you very much for attending here tonight and I'm humbly asking for your vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chacklin.
Thank you very much again to the league for sponsoring us. And thank all of you people for coming out here. I remember coming out here maybe 10, 12 years ago when I saw one of my neighbors running for city council and it was a long night. But I'm just going to say this. I'll say, first off, I have brochures and if you, learning about someone in 30-second sound bites is very frustrating, especially if it's Mark Chacklin. The brochures will give you a webpage link and you can contact me by email and talking and phone. The second thing I'll say is this. The problems we all know about need a serious solution. I like humor, I'm a very quick person that way, but I'm also dead serious when it comes to work. I believe you should take your work seriously and do your homework seriously. Never come unprepared, you'd be fired. So the second thing I'll say though, it's light, is there's another issue, the issue of process. Too many times you will, we, me, you, everyone, raise your hand and say, I have a great, great idea. Good, thank you very much. Didn't get, or you'll type in an idea. Great, thank you. Didn't get politely, didn't get put in there. That's going to change if I get a chance to be on this council. Keep your input. Thank you.
Vining?
Thank you for the opportunity. I am the candidate on this panel that is the authentic Pacific Grove city council candidate. I'm not tied to a specific rhetoric. When I walked into the room this night, I walked in here as a servant and we have issues that we can get the job done together. And with that, it's about listening. 30 seconds. The people who need support the most are the residents, not the city. We want to talk to the people in the neighborhoods. Hopefully, we can get more transparency if I'm elected. And I appreciate the opportunity and I'm surrounded by great leaders in here tonight. And I have a website, darlevi4pgcc.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beck.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out this evening. It is after eight o'clock, so it's getting a little late. I wanted to say I'm listening, I'm involved, I care about the future of Pacific Grove. I encourage all of you to stay involved, to get involved, to watch on Channel 25, on Zoom, come to the city council meetings. We need your input as well, but I am listening. I just want to be with that and look forward to all of your support. Thank you so much. Good night.
Thank you. All right, let's give room.
[applause] Debbie? She's next to you. Maybe something will rub off. Grab the brochure.
Great job.
Great job.